Okay, I'd like to call the Bruce Township's Board of Trustees meeting together for August 21st, 2024. Yes, here, let me stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America.
Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look over their agendas? Are there any deletions, additions, or changes they'd like to make?
I'd like to remove item H. Sorry, and add item M, ballot language, and item N, closed session for the purpose of considering material exempt and from discussion or disclosure.
You said it was going to be M, Lake and Michael for closed session?
No.
The other way?
Yeah, closed session.
Which one were you proposing to remove?
Item H. We're still working on that ordinance, so.
The only thing I wanted to add was on item I for payroll, two-step approval process was overtime discussion. Discussion of overtime.
Anybody else?
So what number is that?
Hi. Entertainer motion to approve as amended.
Support.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, move on to comments from the floor. So if there's anybody that would wish to address the board, you can come up to the podium, state your name and address. We prefer to keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. So now's the opportunity.
Paul Okonyavsky, 71970, last year of Bruce Township. Seems there's been yet another lost opportunity in Bruce Township. A number of years ago, MDOT closed Van Dyke between 34 Mile and Ebling. McKay was a dirt road, yet MDOT paved McKay from 34 to Ebling to provide a bypass. Recently, Van Dyke was closed between 34 and 35 mile roads. Despite knowing at least a year in advance, nothing was done to have MDOT pave Gould Road from 34 to 35 mile road and 35 miles from Gould to Van Dyke. Last month, a supervisor was lamenting about all the additional traffic and dust and said he was going to contact MDOT to see if he could recoup some money for extra chloride spray after the fact. Yes, there were problems and issues on the board when I was a trustee. However, a trustee has very limited influence. There was a reactive supervisor then, as there is now. The agenda is driven by the supervisor. It's time for some proactive leadership in Bruce Township.
I'd like to rebuttal that comment. I can answer. I can state on the Blaine Road project. So there was chloride put down that cost the other taxpayers dollars on Gould Road to kind of knock down the dust. That was a state project and those issues are addressed at the state and they did get a invoice from the township for reimbursement. So hopefully we will see some funding for that. As proactive as you can get. Regards to Gould Road being paved, I think if you talk to those residents along Gould Road, the majority of them don't want to see that road paved because they don't want to see traffic going 60 miles an hour in front of their house. So before you suggest that the road should be paved, maybe you should talk to some of them homeowners that do live along there. And then are there the roads in the township that need to be paved a little bit? Maybe possibly sooner than Gould Road would be, but you can say what you want and how you feel about it.
So it was a missed opportunity.
To pave that road. Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Stephen Crayson. I live at 74103 Keene Road. I've been a Bruce Township resident for 10 years. I'm here today to, as a concerned citizen, just to put my position on the record. I've learned recently that there is an ongoing effort to extend commercial property going down North Van Dyke. And that is now currently residential and farmland. Opening up a lot of new, I don't think we, at this point, we should be opening up new commercial property through zoning when we should be encouraging the use and improvement of current commercial properties that are currently vacant along the old Van Dyke and other areas of roofs. If we can't fill vacant commercial properties, we shouldn't be creating more commercial zones. We need to, we need a strategy to encourage growth and improve existing commercial zones in a controlled way. I don't want to see Bruce become another Washington or Shelby Township. I'm not alone in that position either. Every resident I've talked to also wants to keep Bruce rural and is opposed to rezoning and commercialization of Van Dyke. One person I talked to sees Bruce as a bedroom community and wants it to stay that way. Another person I talked to about old Van Dyke, well, they actually brought it up about all the vacant properties when I talked about commercialization. And they wanted to see, you're like, why, why are we building more if we're not using what we have? And several residents I talked to brought up how ordinance and the master plan are not, are being forced arbitrarily for some and not others. In my opinion, everyone should be, should have to follow the same process and procedures as the master plan should be enforced equally for everyone. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to comment. So previous administration had some so this township, I mean, we need to sustain on not just commercial, but also our industrial growth. Our previous administration, we have an industrial corridor down at 33 Mile Road in McKay. And that's where our industrial quarter should lie. The unfortunate thing is, is there was three projects down there that our previous administration and planning commission, one gentleman here that was on the board at the time, had sold or had changed the rezoning on a M1, which is our industrial, 67.67 acres to a C3, a very high, high residential zoning, and got rid of our M1 industrial there. And another one in Northern Grove project, he took, the previous administration took another 31.42 acres of our M1 and converted it to a high-density multifamily income housing, which is going to be apartments, which we don't even allow in our township. Again, these were done by our previous administration. Then there's another one, Menco Timbers, and there's another C3 that was basically rezoned into the highest density we could have. I mean, pretty much we've got 99 point, almost 100 acres of our M1 district that this township needs to survive on as far as to pay the bills that our previous administration has taken that industrial zoning and turned it into residential, not just residential, but a very high density residential. We have to look at our master plan. It's not for something that we did, it's something that was handed down to us. If they look at the Van Dyke quarter, I'm not really sure, but it needs to be opened up. This current administration has only done two rezonings. Paul, it's not, not going to talk to you, Paul. Do you want to go back and forth? Just stating some facts on what's going on.
Your facts are not true, sir. There is no C3 zoning in this community today. There is none in the master plan.
Then why is Menco Timbers got 3.1 houses per acre?
There's no C3 zoning. I don't know where you're getting your information from.
It's conceptual rezoning with equivalent to. You can say what you want, it's still 3.1 houses on an acre. It's as high as density as you can get.
There is no C3, right?
It's a conceptual rezoning, Paul. You can just, you can say it how it is. This board has not changed any of the zoning. We've made two rezoning changes since we started in four years. One of them is the 156 West Gates is right over here around the corner. That process took almost five years, I think, if I'm not mistaken, to make that rezoning because we worked with the people in the community and our neighbors to make sure that it was what they wanted and what best fit for the township. And we finally came to an agreement after five years of doing so. Industrial corridor, we did take a piece of, a commercial property and we converted it back to our M1 industrial, so we didn't really lose much there. And that was also done by, what was approved by our neighboring communities. Those are the two only rezonings that we've done. So all this talk about rezoning Van Dyke and making it all commercial, I think, I don't know where you're getting your information, but I think you should, you know. Where did I ever say that, Paul?
You have said.
Anyways, is anybody else, time for Paul to come?
My name is Stuart Sickman. I'm a resident of Elkhorn Estates, 12401 Beagle Lake Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. As an owner at the Elkhorn Estates, I have come here this evening to voice my opposition to the rezoning of the land adjoining or next to Elkhorn Estates. I'm sure that other residents purchased in that sub for specific reasons. One might be location, location, location. Please carefully consider that residents were there first and for a reason. We like the area. I like this other gentleman's comments about utilizing existing manufacturing sites for manufacturing. I've lived down near Hall Road for many years and, you know, they keep building strip malls, but the one down the street is half vacant. And it's just frustrating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Santilli, 75773 Elkhorn. Just real quick, I want to touch on two things. Number one is the fire department. Fortunately, I've had to use them a few times this past year for medical emergencies and a recent natural gas concern. So I want to thank the fire department. We've got a very great fire department here in the township. They work very hard, long hours, give up a lot of time away from their families, missing holidays, weekends, like I said, working 24-hour shifts sometimes and maybe even longer, who knows? But we're just very fortunate to have such a dedicated crew here in the township who's very professional. So thank you to Chief Nakus and the fire department for everything they do. We're very fortunate. The second thing I wanted to comment is on behalf of the Elkhorn Estates Association is the vacant property on the east side of M53, just north of 35 Mile. They're talking about rezoning it from R1, single-family residential to M1 industrial. We took a poll recently and out of the 47 sold lots in Elkhorn Estates, everyone unanimously opposes the rezoning. Again, we feel that it's best to stick to the master plan. As you know, that property, and I did send you an aerial the other day in the email, but it does border the property or several properties within the Elkhorn Estates neighborhood. So that would have a high impact on the residents living there. When they moved in, they thought it was going to be a residential. And now all of a sudden, we're talking about industrial. I know at the planning commission meeting, it was mentioned that that could even be a factory if rezoned to that. So we encourage you to oppose that. As the previous resident mentioned, you know, I also grew up in the M59 area. Back in the day, it was a two-lane road. There was barns on both sides. Romeo Plank was dirt, Hayden Rick was dirt, and we saw what happened. Once M59 got built up, you look at Romeo Plank, it got built up as well and many of the other areas. So our concern is, okay, you start building up M53, then what's going to happen? Does Ebling get built up and does it just continue on? Most of us moved out here because we wanted to get away from that. You know, we want to keep Bruce Township rural and we're hopeful that our elected officials will support that. And I think just hearing from most of the residents speaking throughout all these meetings, they're on board with that and want to keep it rural. We don't want to end up like a Washington township. You look at, it was a beautiful community. They pretty much built up every area at this point. So you know, the other question, a lot of people in our neighborhood are wondering is, how many times are we going to bring this up? I know we've been to several meetings, but we did try to negotiate with the developer at one point, so I want to make that known, but instead of going down that path, all of a sudden, we're on this path. So again, we strongly oppose this and we hope that you all vote against this rezoning. Thank you.
You know, Jim, that we don't, we're not the ones that bringing these rezonings to the table. The applicant, the owner of the property has that right. They paid $2,700 for an application. Legally, we have to go ahead and have them go through the motions of public hearing, present their site plan and what they want to do. We have no other option. We just can't tell them, no, you can't do it. And we don't want to, you know, you know, we got to go through this process and this is a process which we're following. You do know also, I know you said you're opposed to rezoning, but you do know Elkhorn was rezoned. As beautiful a community as it was, it was rezoned from R1 to R1A, which you guys are on smaller parcels than what it should have been. So it would have been, I mean, beautiful as it is right now, it would have been a lot nicer if you had bigger lots, which, you know, basically because of the rezoning, you guys are also, you know, a lot denser than you should be. So we want to keep it rural. I get it. But again, that was a rezoning that was done prior to us. I would rather seen it be two acre minimums there. So.
Yeah.
It was a rezoning.
Comes down to what's in their backyard. You know, I'm sure if you were experiencing that, you'd be against it too.
I just want to clarify that you guys, there was a rezoning for your, for Elkhorn as well as maybe, you know, you know, opposing rezoning, but you guys were rezoning at the time.
Yeah. Well, again, residential versus industrials, a lot different. So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thomas McMullin, 75699 Elkhorn Drive. This is becoming all too frequent visits to this podium to address whether it's the planning commission or the board at large. And not to be a broken record, but like everybody else that lives in the area that has moved, I just celebrated three years as a resident of Bruce Township and I'm proud of that. And I moved from within a mile of Lakeside Mall. And I lived and worked in that, that type of environment. And in my retirement years, made the decision to move out here for the rural atmosphere that it offers. And, you know, that's great that, you know, you point out, Mr. Philbrook, that there was a zoning change for Elkhorn that, by the way, would have been done 20-plus years ago when that was done. And you're talking about apples and oranges here. We're talking about, you know, R1, R2, whatever. There's still substantial lots in the common space that we have makes up for the lack of, you know, really big lots. Most of the lots are three quarters to an acre anyway. I back up to a farm field, which is a common space that's leased. I made that choice. I did not make a choice to be in an industrial area. I did not make a choice to be in a heavily commercialized area. I did look at the master plan for this township when I was making the decision to spend my money where I was going to build my home, where I hope to spend out the rest of my days. Maybe another 40 years if I'm lucky. You're all residents here. And just like the zoning board, keep Bruce Township rural. We don't need to be Sterling Heights, Shelby Township, Washington Township. If folks want to go to Meyer, they can go to 26 Mile. They don't need that. At the planning commission meeting, there was some foreshadowing of a review, an upcoming review of the master plan. Prior to the board looking at our matter, as they talked about a matter of a proposed development at Utica, or I'm sorry, at Van Dyke and 53, there was a lot of discussion around, well, just hit the pause button on your request. Come back after we've had a chance to revisit the master plan. To me, that sounds like some decisions are already being made, forecasting some changes. And there was discussion about commercializing from 34 North. So, you know, you're probably looking at the timer, telling me that my time is up. We're not going away. You work for us. Please remember that. And I urge you, let's just follow what the planning commission wisely did a second time, denied the rezoning. Taking it up to an M1 is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Solklowski, 75200 Elkhorn. Obviously, what everybody said I agree with and what I said at the planning commission too. You know, we had an agreement with this gentleman to try to work with him. Now they come back and want an M1 with zero restrictions, with no plan. If we can, if we convert this lot, this piece of property over, we already know that everything else along there is going to come back and ask for the same thing. And there's nothing that this township can do to stop that. And at that planning meeting, they were talking about putting a gas station in at Ebling. We don't want a gas station on the corner. Ebling, we want it to stay rural. But as soon as you open this up for that, that rating, that's all going to go all the way down Van Dyke. And that's our problem. We moved out here to be rural. And like you said, we have 30-plus acres of farmland in our sub. So yes, we got smaller lots. But we all back up to a commons area and we all have beautiful green trees and stuff in our backyards. That's what we moved out here for. And now you want to change that to something that has no restrictions, that can be noisy, can be light pollution. We have no control over that. That's not what anybody asked for. And the fact that we have to come back and keep doing this because it's open, because the planning is now, we're going to open up the whole master plan. And when we were here, the previous administration, when we all looked into it, they're like, we are not going to go past 33 Mile Road. That's it. That's as far as we're going to go with it. And that's what was sold to the residents that are here. And now we're looking to make a change and we just find that unacceptable. So hopefully you're going to listen to the residents and do the right thing for us.
I just want to emphasize again, it's not us that are saying that we're trying to rezone it. We are not the ones rezoning it. It's the applicant and the property owner.
Yeah, but at the planning commission, that's, it was, it was talked pretty heavily about what we could or couldn't do and they made suggestions on the property.
Again, this township and this board has not changed any of the rezoning at all since we've been here almost four years now.
So it's pay to play.
Pardon me?
It's pay to play. You keep paying $2,700 and once you.
That's the applicant pays the $2,700. If you own the property and you said you wanted to try to develop and we told you, no, you can't develop, you need to leave it farmland, would that, is that right?
He should have looked into that before he bought it.
Well, he bought that property maybe before, was something before you guys moved in there. I know he's owned it at least five years. But I'm just saying, we cannot deny them the opportunity to come in front of the planning commission to try to rezon it.
But all he does every time is threaten us that we're just going to go ahead and put more buildings up there and that's what the planning.
I understand. And not only did the town, not only did the planning commission turn it down once, this township board turned it down once. And I know I was the deney saying vote the first time it got turned down. So you guys can beat up on us all you want, but if you were the property owner and you wanted to rezon it, you had that opportunity to come in and try to rezon or build on it as currently zoned.
I don't think we're beating up, we're just dating one.
We, like you said, some.
Zone residential, you got to understand that there's no guarantee you're going to be able to turn it around. And that's what you, you know, you're trying to tell us that, well, he's got a right. Yeah, he's got a right, but he had a right to know what he was buying. He purchased a lot that was zoned residential and he keeps coming before you, asking for some changes. And now he's ramped it up with no plan. That's why we're upset.
All right, settle down because it's getting out of control. I'm not going to go back and forth. I'm just trying to clarify a few things that you guys are trying to make it look like it's our. Tom, if you can't control yourself, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Okay? I'm sorry. Take another comment if anybody else wants to come up to comment.
Mike, you're talking like you don't have a say in how it.
We have a vote. We're going to vote on it when we're all done. And it said when we get to the agenda item, we will be voting on it.
So you have it.
So the board does have a say in whether this is rezoned.
We have the final say.
We have a vote, but what Mike is.
You've listened to them, you've allowed them to submit their application and voiced their wants. They purchased it as residential.
Right.
They can develop it as residential.
They could, but at the same time, he can come here 20 times with $2,700 each time requesting for it to be rezoned. That's legally, he's, he has the right to do that. We have an obligation to study it, see how everybody feels about it, and then cast a vote. That's all we're saying. That's all my supervisors will say. Yep.
Other comments to open? If anybody else wants to come in?
John Bingham, 71398 Lasser Road. I just want to make a comment regarding the article I read, which was rather discouraging on the cemetery in Bruce Township. That the township is even involved in this issue or taking any matters in it with our tax dollars, us to pay these taxes. I think everything's pretty clear from one article with questions to another article with a ton of answers. It's been operating for a lot of years. No complaints, no issues.
Where are tax dollars?
Here we are.
Can I ask?
Well, I must understand we're hiring attorneys. That's my understanding. That's tax dollars are used to pay those attorneys.
Right.
On something that's not even managed by Bruce Township. That cemetery falls under the Cemetery Commission. And Linda Gleig is the head of that Cemetery Commission. If there's any issues, I would assume it's through Linda Gleig, not Bruce Township. Bruce Township is not the Cemetery Commission.
Can I, can I give you our version here?
Yes.
So, yes, I've been here almost four years. And I was always told ever since I was, I took over the cemeteries, they're their own entity, they do their own thing, this and that. Fine. I didn't care because we don't want another cemetery. Okay? It's just added cost to the.
Exactly.
Right. So an issue came up recently with somebody that owns a plot in there and there was a disagreement about a burial. a disagreement about a burial. So when this person called me, I said, hey, man, that's hands-off. I'm not doing, I can't do nothing about it. We don't own that cemetery.
Exactly.
Call the association. Well, that never happened, for whatever reason, nor did the president of the association call her. I would think that if I heard there was a complaint, I'd want to know why, and I'd call. So I find fault on both sides for not calling each other to find out what the problem was. So now that this became an issue of a wrong burial, I started looking and started realizing that, hey, it says Bruce Cemetery on here, and it has our address as where the tax bill goes. So I questioned, do we own this or not? No one knew. We have no documentation. We've heard for years...
Well, you wouldn't, because that's to the state, not to Bruce Township.
You're right. But I asked them, do you have any paperwork that says you own it? Yes, we do. Well, produce it to me so we can put this to bed and to rest. I never received anything. We have it. Show me. We have it. Show me. It went back and forth, and now all of a sudden, there's a picture in a paper with these documents. Help. Please bring them to me. I'd like to see them so we can...
Well...
Take the address off of that tax bill that says 223 East Gate Street, put your address on it, and we're done.
Frank, if you want me to address you, do you want me to come up here, or do you want me to...
You got to come up.
I'm just talking as a group, because I know he's with you. You're talking about it.
No, I'm not just with her. I've got a problem, because I'm a taxpayer in this town, and this is tax dollars being sent on something that's not necessary.
Correct. And that's why I asked for documentation, because if this goes to court, you're spending more tax dollars.
And as it shouldn't. Again, this should all be going through Lisa Gleig. Any complaints go through the commission. They shouldn't even be talking to you. I mean, I can give her the phone number, I got it right here.
That's fine, I'll take it. But it's real simple. You have those documents, show us. That's all we want.
We don't want the cemetery, John. But we just got to make sure that if anything...
It's added cost, as he said.
We don't want it. We have three. We're having a hard enough time maintaining it.
But again, I don't know, and again, honestly, the cemetery issue is the cemetery's issue.
Yep.
My issue is Bruce Township overstepping its bounds.
But we don't know, we're not, we may be, we don't know we're not liable.
Well, it's the commission, is my point. Not, don't go to the cemetery, go to the commission, because that's who they answer to.
If they have the paperwork that says they own it, what's so hard about presenting it and putting everything that's...
I guess rather they have to justify themselves to you. They justify themselves...
Because our tax records show that it's in our address. We own it.
And we still are, basically, if you do a title search, it comes back as Bruce Township right now.
Correct.
We just want to make sure that the title gets transferred to deed, whatever needs to be done. If something happens out there, we're not responsible. Then if there's a complaint, it's like, sorry, we don't own the cemetery, you got to go to the...
Well, I think there's 120-some-odd years of evidence that shows that Bruce Township...
But where's the doc, we just need a document changed legally, let's do it. That's all we've been trying to get done.
Real simple.
Now, I imagine Linda Gleig could probably get them.
But we haven't seen...
The Cemetery Commissioner.
But what is so hard about showing us the documents? Bringing the, so we can make copies of it, put it to rest? What is so hard about that?
I, that's not where I'm standing. I'm standing on the township spending money. That's where I'm at.
I totally agree. I don't think it's spending, I don't think it's spending money, but it's also a waste of time, and we could be using our energy towards other things that are more important.
For guys getting a...
Exactly.
Wrong zoning.
Yep.
All right.
Tracy Harrington, 3343 Sutton Road in Dryden. I'm going to back up here, and we're going to first talk about, yes, do I have the records? And I have told you from the beginning I had those.
Yes.
Nora Martha Hope, her mother, I can go back probably 60, 70 years now that they've kept every single piece of paper. The problem being is that, and this is on your own, guys, not mine, you intertwined a problem with one of your employees, and you brought it into ownership of the cemetery. The two should not have been together at all. It has nothing to do with the other one. Wait. Mike, the last time we spoke, I said, okay. I came up here, I asked you both, do you want, do you want the cemetery? Is that what you're trying to do? I need you to know what was going on. You need to be honest.
We keep saying, no, we don't.
You said, no. But you and I spoke after, and I said, so I have these things that you want, insurance, this, things that we've kept on it for years and years and years, nothing different. We didn't go out and get anything new for you guys. And you said, I said, is that, does this stop? Does this stop? None of us need this anymore. This has gotten out of hand.
Totally agree.
And you told me your exact words were, I can't promise you how my Board is going to vote. Vote on what?
I don't even know what we, I don't even know the subject of what we were talking about.
We were talking, to make, I wanted to know, does this stop once I show you what we have, what you asked for, the deed, articles of incorporation? The reporter came up with a bunch of stuff that he just looked for without me.
There would be no vote if you came up with the proper paperwork.
Well, I said the same thing, Mike. I said, vote on what?
Susan, stop banging your head around. Pardon me?
I asked you, vote on what?
Well, right now, currently, like I said, when we do a title search, it comes back as ownership of Bruce Township.
It doesn't. I have the title, and I know that...
But why don't you show it to us?
No. I, you ran title through your Title I.
Yep.
And I ran it through Greco, and they both came up with nothing, because the cemetery, they don't pay taxes, they never have. They both come up with nothing. Your girl said, well, it's just going to be our assumption the township owns it, because we can't find anything. You sent me the email, I have it.
What they do have is that everything they have has our address on it.
It does, and it was a default address, because it wasn't a personal address. They defaulted it back here, and I think that John, your husband's sister, was here.
Right.
When the track records came out, they used it as a default address.
So all we're asking is, you said you contacted an attorney. Let's get the paperwork drawn up.
We did.
We'll get it, whatever we need to do. We don't want the cemetery 100 times over, and what we've asked for, we still haven't gotten one piece of paper.
You haven't, because the way you guys went about things, then I would...
It's not us. We need to cover, if it's in the township's name, and somebody's sitting in the frying pan, and somebody, something happens, like a complaint's happened with the resident, they're looking at us, it's like, why aren't you doing anything about it? You guys are the owners. Show us that we're not the owners and we're not responsible, they have to go away. We don't have to deal with it.
And I need to rebut something.
Okay.
You know, you said it, yes, it was an employee of the township.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but I did not look at it that way. I looked at it as a complaint, because when it came to me, I told her, you got to call them. That's theirs, huh? But then, you know, then I hear, start hearing this scuttlebutt that we own it, something. Then I said, whoa, wait a minute. Before it gets caught...
Who said, wait, what scuttlebutt? Who said you owned it?
There was discrepancy on who owned it. Do we own it? Do they own it?
Where was the discrepancy? Where did this come from?
Because there's nothing on record here at the township that you are your own entity. All it has is Bruce Township, 223 East Gates.
How did an upset employee go into a discrepancy? I'm not even seeing how this one thing led to another.
Well, because she had a complaint. She had a complaint about, she had a complaint about a wrong bailer, correct?
She does.
Right.
I think she does.
Okay, so, that's where I, I said, okay, you have a complaint. I don't care if it was an employee, or if it was Mother Mary down the street that lived in Bruce Township. If they had a complaint, that's the way I addressed it. It had nothing to do with her being an employee. I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
It was a complaint, and if, and if, and without knowing, having the knowledge of who owned the cemetery, I thought it was best that we start asking questions, so that way it doesn't get, go into litigation, like that gentleman said, and start costing taxpayers dollars. That was it.
It's costing us money that we don't want to spend.
Right. And we even offered to pay for half of your deed search that you're doing.
You know what? Nobody's going to find anything on it. You didn't, we're not going to. We all have to agree that that's the way it's going to be.
Then that's fine. Then show us the paperwork, and the Board will take a look at it, and will take a vote.
You and I talked several times when this first came about, correct?
Yep.
How many times did I say, oh, my goodness, if something was wrong, have her call me, we'll do...
I did.
How much did I actually extend that olive branch?
I did. And you're right, and I reiterated that. I can't control why she didn't call you or help that. But at the same time, and please forgive me, I don't mean to be rude, but if you've been the president of this association, if you heard there was a complaint, then why didn't you call her also?
I don't have a problem. And I checked everything, you know, the night it happened. I went up and went through everything. I knew that everything was correct.
So that's how...
Maybe it was just an emotional time.
Yes, it is. It's an emotional time for both parties in that situation.
But if she really did, she actually herself talked to John White on our Board and said, I don't want to talk to any of you. I'm letting the township handle this for me.
Okay, I was, I'm not aware of that.
That's exactly how that conversation went. You're welcome to have that conversation with her.
We take care of three other cemeteries, by the way, so this isn't the only cemetery that we spend money on.
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, we...
Well, let's just get this settled, then, because...
It's really a shame that people have this attitude right now.
If you guys own it, we don't care. We hope you own it, because it takes less, it takes the cost off our burden.
It does, and we want to keep it nice, and we want, we have reasons, sentimental reasons for keeping it.
You guys do a beautiful job. That place looks immaculate.
Well, it's, we're having growing pains, but we're trying, and thank you for that. Okay?
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Has anything been done and resolved regarding the missed burial? I mean, you're talking about the son of...
There's no missed burial, so no, there's not.
According to you, but according to her, she says you buried her son in the wrong location. This is not just about, you know, maybe something small. This is a family member, her son, that she feels is buried in the wrong location. Now, you said you've never contacted her.
No.
But you say that the son is buried in the right location. So who's going to straighten out this whole issue to make sure that her son's buried in the right location or resolve that problem that we have?
Mike, I've showed you all the maps.
She showed me all her maps, and what she shows me is correct, and what you're showing me is correct. So who's right? You need to figure it out. If this is your association...
I really, wait a minute. I do not feel in any way, shape, or form that he, anyone was buried in the wrong place.
But she feels that it was. That's her family.
She has a right to feel that way, okay? But if she's not correct, you keep telling me we have to make it right.
She's got papers that shows that it is correct. Nobody's got the burial transcript. For some reason, the burial transcript is nowhere's to be found.
It has been found.
Well, where's that at?
I have the burial transcript.
Well, thank you.
But you know what? We talked about that before, and I don't know that that, I said, is that going to stop everything? And you said, I can't promise you that.
Well, I can't say how these people may feel about it, but I mean, I know how I would feel about it. We had legitimate paperwork, which we haven't seen the burial transcript, we haven't seen a deed or a title or anything that shows it's an association. You said you hired an attorney to go out and take care of it, and I says, great, let's get it going, let's get the paperwork. I can't say that the Board is going to approve signing it over if we need to sign over what the paperwork comes up. Whatever it takes, we don't want the cemetery...
There's nothing to sign over, and that's what I tried to talk to you about, but we were, just kept going in circles.
It's a piece of property, any way you want to look at it. It's a physical piece of a parcel land within the township. It has an actual parcel ID number and everything to it.
It does.
So it is a piece of paper that has got to be recorded at the county as far as ownership is concerned. If there's an association, whatever you guys call it, Tracy's Cemetery Association, it's got to be on that paperwork. Right now, the stuff that's coming back shows Bruce Township on the paperwork.
The address. It shows care of.
So all we're trying...
It's Bruce Cemetery Association.
Let's do it the right, the right way. But you do have a resident or a customer of yours that is not very happy, and I don't know if they're going to take it to the next level or not, I'm not really sure.
And that is, they have every right to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Public comment? Anybody else? No? Thanks. All right. Okay. And we'll move on. Public comment's closed. On item 6A of unfinished business, going to be the Walker rezoning for parcel number 14-01-14300-010, located on Van Dyke. I did speak with the property owner this morning, and he said they will have no representation at our meeting tonight, and whatever we decided to do with it, we'll just, he's fine with it. So, Anne Marie, this is in front of the Planning Commission for a second time.
Correct.
Do you want to go ahead and...
And if I, would it be, all right, Mike, if I recap how we got here?
Sure.
Because there is a lot of apparent confusion.
Yep.
This matter...
Speaking to the mic, though.
Thank you. This matter first came before the Planning Commission in July of 2023. The property owner requested a rezoning from R1 to M1 with a verbal stipulation and a drawing that it would be for a mini storage facility if it was rezoned, and there were no other conditions offered. The Planning Commission had a public hearing, we heard the request, and the Planning Commission recommended denial for multiple reasons, including concerns about setting a precedent and spot zoning. Two weeks later, the Board subsequently, in a split vote, but subsequently voted to deny that request for reasons stated by the PC. Later in 2023, a new application was filed by the property owner that came to the Planning Commission in December, again requesting rezoning from R1 to M1 with the stated use of a mini storage facility, and this time, there were three small written conditions associated with the request, that if approved, it would be conditional on that, what was submitted. The surrounding property owners believed that conditions offered were inadequate and not reflective of what they were anticipating, and the applicant did agree to meet with a small committee of people who were designated at that time to discuss conditions. The matter was tabled until February. In February, the PC agreed to continue the table of the matter at the applicant's request. In April, he requested a final extension until August for him to reconsider his plans for the property. It was granted. This is normal. It wasn't anything particular or special for this gentleman. Two weeks ago, the applicant appeared on time back at the planning commission and requested a straight-up rezoning from R1 to M1 with no conditions whatsoever, and he also stated that his business plans had changed, and he had made a determination that a storage facility was no longer viable for that location. That was a business decision. So again, he straight-up rezoning to M1. The planner did review what would be special and permitted, or, or special land uses and permitted land uses in M1, as this was different than what was requested in December. He has an obligation to do that when new information comes up, which was the reason for that coming before the PC. What was being proposed and what was brought up by the various planning commissioners is that it was the same proposal that was denied last summer, because there were no conditions, and moreover, at this time, there wasn't even a promise it was going to be a mini storage, because the gentleman's business plan changed. In addition, the PC pointed out that we have opened the master plan for a very limited review of industrial and commercial. We want to make sure we have enough. If we have too much, then, you know, if we have too much, we'll change it. If we don't have enough, then we'll need to figure out, do we want to change a plan? It's simply a review. The PC did recommend to this board that the request be denied, and it was for several reasons. It's unconditional rezoning with no statement as to final use. Some of the M1 uses are intense and would have unwanted impacts. It's inconsistent with the master plan and the future land use map. We still have vacant M1 parcels available for development in the industrial corridor. It's not appropriate to add manufacturing to a single-family residential district. The rezoning would grant the applicant a special benefit not allowed to others, and it could result in spot zoning and setting a precedent for that area of Van Dyke. The reasons that were, that the PC last week, two weeks ago, recommended denial are essentially the same as the recommendation last summer. The new ingredient is, is that we're not even sure what we're going to do with that corridor. We are opening the master plan for review, and we're going to go through the process with the public input. So, I don't know if you guys have any other questions about what's transpired, why the PC made the recommendation that they, they did.
I have a question. The first time it was up for M1 without any conditions, you said it was a split vote. Who was the naysaying vote for, you know, who was the deciding vote for denial?
Uh, the board was put together of different people. I was not on the board at that time. I believe the final vote was Mr. Tremblay, Ms. Craft, both who aren't here, and yourself, Mike, who voted to deny the request.
It was a split vote, I remember correctly, and it was 2-2, and I was the deciding vote on which way it was going to go. I voted against M1 on that. I could have voted yes, and it would have been M1. So I don't know where this whole thing is, is I want M1, and I would have voted then for it. So I was the deciding vote at that time to deny the M1. So, just want to clarify that. I have no other questions. We can go ahead and, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the planning commission to deny the rezoning of the M1 parcel, or the Walker parcel. Give the parcel number again, 1401-14300-010. Support by DeGiorgio. Is there any other discussion? We had a roll call, please, Ann Marie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I want to thank all the people in Elkhorn that I met with. We did have conversations. I thought we were getting pretty close, and appreciate you taking the time out, coming to meet with us after hours when you could have been at home. Times you've had to come here to these meetings, it's just a process we have to go through. I think we got really close with the storage facility, but right now, it's currently as-is. So, appreciate it. Thank you very much again for coming out, so. Jim, thanks for all you did to kind of pull everybody together, so. Okay. Motion to deny is there, so. Yeah, we'll move on to item 7A under the Romeo, item 7A under New Business Romeo High School plaque presentation. Did Mike Tremblay get here yet?
Yeah, he's right there.
Oh, he's way back there, hiding.
He's hiding.
Hiding in the back.
Where do you want me to go?
Yeah, so we got Tim Bosno from the Romeo High School. Congratulations on your 25 years of teaching. This is your anniversary this year. So first, why don't you tell us what the government class does and what this, what this actually would be representative of?
Uh, we're much more than a government class these days. We're actually a law public safety program. Five years ago, when we went to a career-based model of learning for next-generational learning, students can pick one of three academies, and then from there, they pick 10 pathways. So their sophomore year, they pick like, it's almost like a college major. So I'm in charge of law public safety pathway, and I can tell you, I've done a lot of things for Romeo Community Schools, including coaching for many years, and I see the way the community comes together to support everything we do, the tri-communities, and they're doing it with my program. And I can tell you that I'm very humbled, as an educator, to be recognized that the good things we're doing in the classroom with our students, and very appreciative of it. And Mike Tremblay, I don't know what your title is, former trustee, most recent former trustee?
Everything.
You know, one week, you should have got yourself off that ballot, but he was a hall honored at the high school, very much a cheerleader for what we're doing, and saw, you know, our guest speakers and in what we do, and, and, to be quite honest, when he saw Washington Township put one in my room, he goes, no, no, not so fast. Bruce is going to have a presence in there too, so. But I do, I thank you, I appreciate it, as an educator, to be recognized for what we're doing, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have two of them. What's the other one? One for the classroom and one for the-
The one that goes up on the board, you got it from the- That takes a couple of work, thanks, learnings, and some job sharing.
Mike, come on, check. You're very interested.
Yes, yes.
It's Kirkett. Straight. There you go.
You got two of them. Take the whole worship.
Trace. I like Mike. Yes.
I'll lift your 20. At least the pressure's off. Thanks, Tim, for coming out. Appreciate it and all you do at the school. Keep up the good work, you know, so. Um, we're going to move on to item 7B, which is Mike Tremblay's years of service, which obviously has been mentioned, so. Mike Tremblay, which is standing over here, 15 years on the planning commission, not only as a planning commission member, but also as a chair for, how many years, Mike, on the PC? 10 years in the board, and 12 years on his EBA. So we have a little presentation we want to give to you, Mike. You want to come up and say something?
Yes.
My wife said I plucked her from Bruce Township. But we were, and we were looking for a lifestyle change. We looked at condos, we looked at condo developments in Bruce. We just didn't find anything that fit our lifestyle, so. We found a place that had the amenities that we wanted, and it wasn't in Bruce, unfortunately. But do miss Bruce Township. There's more traffic where I moved. I don't have the big backyard, and, and I used to be able to bike to the bike pass. I can't do that anymore. But it was a pleasure to serve in Bruce for 15 years. It was, I probably never would have served in government if it wasn't for the supervisor at the time, Tiganelli, and one of my neighbors, Ken Melton, who urged me to, to serve, and it was a, it was a good move. I really enjoyed it. I feel like we may have had some positive influence in Bruce, and I got to serve with these people, at least three of them, Mike, Frank, and Susan, and I think as a board, I felt that if you take a look at the total works of the board, they did a great job, and it's been an improvement from prior administrations. They didn't kick the can down the road on the tough issues, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. See, the board's not all that bad. Okay, we'll move on to item 7C, which is our Decker Agency Proposal of Coverage. Susan?
It's Dustin.
Hey, Dustin.
The details.
It's been a year already?
Hi. Yes, yes, it has. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it, as always, to come in front of you guys to just walk through the, the insurance this year. So this year, Chief was able to join, which was a pleasure. In the past, well, his actual official start date was the meeting last year, so last year was a bit of a whirlwind for him, so we were able to sit down and, you know, hash through and go through some stuff that we've been looking to focus on. You know, as you're aware, two of the, the biggest things that are facing us in insurance right now are building repair costs and vehicle costs, primarily the fire trucks and the ambulances. One of the things that we've experienced, especially with ambulances, is the tremendous increase in cost, somewhat north of $150,000 for a unit, which, you know, again, three years ago was, you know, 150, and now, after, you know, doing some research, you know, it could be anywhere from between $365,000 and $400,000 for outfitted rig such as yours that you have in your fleet. I will say that I remember, I was here when you guys all first started, and you guys had made the recommendations to start implementing the fleet, which I thought was a great idea at the time, because the, the costs have gone up so much for what you paid for your, your vehicles back then versus what you would pay now. You, you definitely saved some money. But one thing that we do have to take into account is obviously the coverage for those larger costs coming out of the manufacturer. Right now, the, the property side, you know, we're, we're comfortable with. We're, we're trying to find a good middle ground, you know, in terms of where to settle in. Right now, we're, we're looking to be between $275,000 and $300,000 a square foot. The proposed increase this year is roughly 20% higher. A lot of that is, is based on the increase in the property coverage. Our loss ratio here in the township continues to move, unfortunately. We've had claims, you know, over the last six years, we've, we've paid more in claims than, than we've collected, so, you know, there's a bit of a balancing act that's taking place there. We also have roughly eight options on the invoice. During the review, we found four vehicles that needed to be deleted, and we have four proposals for vehicle limit increases. If we were to take the options, so the, the four deleted items would be $5,291 in savings, okay? To increase the ambulances, which are the primary ones that we're focusing on, that would be $3,068. So there would be a little savings in, obviously, taking all eight of those options that we currently have in the invoice for you guys.
Dustin, I don't mean to interrupt you. Can you repeat this again?
Please. Yeah, absolutely. No, please. So there were, there were four delete options, okay? That totals $5,291. There are four proposed vehicle limit increases, which totals $3,068.
Thank you. That was all on the fireside, correct?
Yes, yes. The, the, and just, and just so you guys, you guys know, you know, the bulk, the bulk of Bruce's exposure is the fire department. You know, we're, you know, you have, you have a great community. You guys have set up a wonderful fire department, and as such, like you said, they, they represent the, the bulk of the exposure, whether it be on the employee side, the vehicle side, or the building side. So, sorry, I'm just, so like I said, when, when we're looking at having to adapt and keep up with the market, one thing I guess I could say to all the public out here, and I know that insurance is not a hot topic for everybody, but insurance is reactionary to the world that we live in. You know, the home, the price to rebuild a home is going up, vehicles are going up. I'm seeing a trend more and more where people are walking in and wanting to keep the same lease price that they've had, and they're walking out with half of the size of the vehicle. You know, they've gone down from, say, a Tahoe down to a Blazer, and now they're going from a Blazer down to a Trax, because they want to keep that maybe $500 or $600 payment, but it just doesn't get as much car as you used to have. You know, the thing that you'll notice too is that the, you know, building materials, as well as the labor side of that, has gone up tremendously, and those are just things that we're, we're having to deal with. The number of claims, again, as we've talked about, we've had another steady year of, basically, the, the same number of claims being submitted, but again, you know, the cost of each claim going through the roof. So we're just trying to, you know, account for it as best that we can. We hopefully, you know, in the next couple of years, we'll have some claims drop off, so as that, that ship will right itself a little bit more. Obviously, the loss of the ambulance, you know, will, will be accounted for, you know, for the next three years. So that was, like I said, just an unfortunate hit that took. Does anybody have any questions for me? Otherwise, I can talk forever.
Please. Go ahead.
Is there anything specific in, in the packet that was put in there?
Chief, you got anything?
No, me and Dustin and Susan obviously sat down, had a great conversation. It sounds like he's made all the corrections that I considered, that I thought were important. We increased coverages on four of the alphas, just to make sure they are covered. Those are the ones that would probably be the most likely that we would have a claim on. We also went through it to make sure that we had all the right vehicles.
And, and this is not a, a guesstimate from me or from Chief. You guys primarily work with a manufacturer called Kodiak. They were great to talk to. I called them the next day in the morning. I got a call returned to me, just kind of going over a rough overview of, you know, current costs. So they were, they were great to work with, so we got that right from the horse's mouth. This isn't just kind of some guesswork. The other thing I just wanted to point out there too, and something that, you know, he was very strong in putting out there, what you're looking at right now in terms of your vehicle coverage, yes, I will be supplying this money in the event of a loss, but something that we really need to take into a long-term account is, is that they are logistically three years behind. Ambulances and fire trucks are just not around right now, and, and thankfully, we have a, a bigger fleet. We can absorb a loss here or there. For how long, though, that's something that, that needs to be considered. One thing that, you know, I've been talking about is, is the used market. Chesterfield just down the way, they picked up a two-year-old used ladder to replace their 97, same specs, same height, same stick length. They got it for 1.6 million. You know, we're, we're insuring it for brand-new, but they got a heck of a deal. They saved just about a million dollars on a truck like that, and they got it in a week. So those are big things to always consider going down the line, because right now, you know, anything being delivered is at least three-year-old, three-years-old. The other thing, just to point out for you guys, is that I can say confidently that they will not hold their quote price. Vehicles that I'm having delivered now are sitting on, you know, 20 and 21 invoices. They will not do that now. If they quote you now, it'll hold 30 days. So that's the other thing that we have to take into account, is, you know, God forbid, anything happens, right? That number's just going to be a moving target for us as we go down the line. So just logistically looking, you know, far out, because like you said, you just never know when something's going to happen.
I'll make motion, go ahead and approve proposal of coverage from Decker Insurance Agency as presented. Effective December, or September 1st, 2024. Support by DeGiorgio. Discussion? I know this, there was other, you looked at other people, but this is all we ended up with, right? So, I know that was brought up before previously, you would look at other options, but no, thanks for all you do. Appreciate it.
And as always, like you said, we, we appreciate serving Bruce. You're a wonderful community, and like you said, we're just happy to be there for you guys. If it's okay, may I excuse myself?
Absolutely. We got a roll call.
Yeah. Thanks, Dustin.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you guys so much for your time.
Yep.
My information's right on the front. If anybody has questions or a text or an email, if you think of something later, I'd be happy to take a call or take an email anytime you have it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time.
Stay safe. Frank, you safe?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Dustin, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night. Let's move on to item 7D, which is our Maryfield Powinski SLU, 88184 Tamrec, parcel number Ann Marie?
Uh, yeah. This was a request brought before the planning commission, special land use. The individual, the homeowner, was requesting to add a bay to his existing garage, which is attached, that would expand the garage to a total square footage that is over the 900 feet allowed in our ordinance for his size of home. An alternative that the individual did look at, that would have given him actually even more square footage, was to have built an accessory building, which he would be entitled to do. Unfortunately, the layout and topography of his property makes that nearly difficult to achieve. He would be bringing his driveway very close to the lot line, still meeting setbacks, but much closer. The topography drops off 15 feet toward the back where he could, you know, you would think would put an accessory building. His, he's got existing drainage, drainage issues in the rear yard, which he spent a lot of money to get corrected, and doesn't want to do it over again. In addition- In addition, he would have to remove several large trees from the property. So where he wound up is expanding his garage a small amount. The PC did recommend to the board to approve the special land use for 8184 Tamarack to increase the attached garage space by a total of 360 square feet, based on the exterior dimensions for the reasons that I just stated.
Thank you. Is there somebody here from Powinski?
I don't see him.
Okay. All right, you want to make a motion regarding the...
Yes, I would make a motion that the board approved the special land use for the Maryfield Powinski SLU. Do you want me to read the...
Parcel.
Parcel number again? 140122151-002, and it, the reason is for, as stated by the Planning Commission.
I'll support. Frank, support. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
I have a question.
Okay.
For Emery. So in lieu of putting the accessory structure, he wants to include this bait, which by the way, does look very nice. However, that doesn't preclude him from putting one in in the future, does it?
We talked about that with the gentleman, and, I mean, we can't tie the two things together according to our planner. However, the difficulties in putting a, anything in the rear would be the same in the future as they are now. It's not realistic at all. He's also got a large swimming pool in his backyard. So is anybody ever going to do that? Highly unlikely. I mean, he may put a chicken coop back there, which would count as an accessory building, and that would be negligible, the amount. He would still be entitled to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Emery.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. And we'll move on to the item 7E, which is our Lombardo rezoning. Again, the applicant did call me and stated that he was not going to be here. I think he's looking at some other types of options. One of them, I think he was stating was going to be something with the way it was currently zoned at R1B. So we're going to have to wait for the applicant to come back. So it is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for denial on this issue. No real reason, I don't think, to go through the... You want to go through the...
I don't need to. We had a public hearing and went through the process. There were several reasons identified by the PC for recommending denial of the rezoning They both had to do with a proposal that would build a more dense development than what it is zoned, and also it would entail giving up 15 acres of commercial property that's currently zoned and has long been planned commercial, which is roughly 34% of what we have available right now.
Want to make a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that the board deny the rezoning request that was submitted by the Lombardo company for parcel number... Or, there are several parcel numbers. Do you want me to read them all?
You can, and then maybe Emery can get a copy later or something with all the PC parcel numbers. It would be probably better, highly recommended that you do read them all, for the record.
Can you just say as noted?
You want me to read them?
Yeah.
Okay. Parcel number 14-01-35-101-028.
Just do the last three numbers.
029, 025, 035, and 051.
Okay. We can get you a copy of that, Emery. I'll support. Do we have any other discussion? Now, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we got another PC item. The Harler SLU, special land use for 505034 Mile Road, parcel number 14-01-29-201-003. Emery?
Uh, yes. This was, the initial request by this property owner was for two special land uses to build a third accessory building on his property, which he's entitled to do. His initial request for the SLU involved something that put him over the size limit in terms of what he could add on his property, and the second was to place the new accessory building in the side yard. The gentleman initially requested a 2,400-square-foot accessory building that would have put him roughly 800 feet over what he was allotted. He listened to the PC's concerns, listened to the residents' input, it was a public hearing, asked for a table to come back and reconsider his plan, which he did. He then proposed a 1,600-square-foot accessory building, which puts him within the allowable amount under our ordinance. So the only SLU he required is for placement of the new structure in the side yard. His existing accessory building that he has, the large one, already is in the side yard, and so this would simply extend that. The building is going to be better and nicer-looking construction than the one that exists. The outside appearance will mirror, as well as the colors, with what's already there. The PC's recommending approval of the SLU for the side yard placement for the following reasons. The existing accessory building is already in the side yard. It's blocked by trees. You can't see it. The significant variation in topography in the rear yard would be a limitation on putting the new structure any further back. The design will, in color, will be complementary. He reduced the square footage of the proposed new building so that he is within what's allowed under the ordinance. And the construction itself is approximately 600 feet back from 34 Mile Road. So it's a long way.
And he sits on almost 13 acres.
Correct. 12.8.
Want to make a motion? Is anybody here?
I don't see them either.
Okay. Go ahead.
I will make a motion that the board approve the special land use for the accessory building requested by Michael Harler for parcel number 140129201003.
I'll support.
Court by Smith. Do we have any other discussion? Emery?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, everybody at the Planning Commission, Emery, all you guys did. Hey, I know she's here. A lot of work putting everything together, so. You guys had a long time. You got here 11 o'clock that night?
It was just short of 4:00.
Okay. Good job. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 7G, which is our fire department monitors. Chief, you're up.
Okay, so the cardiac monitors, we have revisited the past-approved proposal for $420,000 that we, was approved in June at the board meeting. We've changed directions. We will be going with Physio Control monitors, which is a LifePac 35, their latest model on the market, which just came out during the process of us placing the order for Zoll. These monitors will be the best option for the next eight to 10 years. Currently, our cardiac monitors are nine years, going on nine years or into their ninth year. So we're proposing, we will be purchasing the monitors and not leasing them this time, based on what Stryker is offering us. It was just a better option to actually purchase the monitors and not lease them. The prior monitors were, we were going to get a newer version than what we have, keep it for five years, and then they were going to upgrade it with their latest and greatest. So that's kind of where there's a few discrepancies and differences between the two. So that's why we're thinking of just purchasing these, because they are going to be good for eight to 10 years. Where the other ones, you know, they were already on the downside of their life cycle. That was just the offer that they had given us. So we had to wait five years until they came out with a new model, and then we would get the latest and greatest. So in that proposal, there was three different proposals. We had several different options. I felt that the best option for the department was a 25-month with no interest option. That proposal is for five monitors, cardiac monitors. We currently have a credit with the company that we are purchasing them from, which is Stryker, which will be due at signing, which is $31,533. The second payment will be not 30 days after receiving the monitors, and that payment will be $72,859.08. The third payment will be at the 13-month mark, the same amount. The fourth payment will be at the 25th-month mark for the same amount, $72,859.08, which is a total of $250,001.1065. So there is a huge difference between what I proposed in June and what we're proposing now. The biggest thing is, and like I said at that meeting, that was the latest and greatest. It was the gold standard. There's really two companies. There's Zoll and there's Physio. At that time, they didn't have their new monitor out. Now they do, and it's pretty nice. And we're saving, between us pulling the brakes on the last proposal that you approved and doing this one, we're probably saving about $100,000. So that one was a 10-year plan of, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $40,000, I think $41,000 a year. That's, it really added to the cost to get that three, to get basically three years interest-free. We just figured, we're like, you know what? That's probably the best route to go versus dragging this on. If we did do the same proposal as the other proposal that I'd proposed to you back in June, we'd be looking at about $380,000. So it just wasn't feasible. It just seems to me like it'd be a lot better to pay the $250,000 in the next three years and be done with it. So it was basically an FYI for you guys. I wanted to bring that back to you, so for transparency. I don't know if you want to reapprove this or if you want just us to continue, because we were approved for $420,000 back in June. So I just want to make you aware of that.
I think we need to reapprove the purchase instead of lease. We were leasing them before.
Correct. We were leasing them before. We're purchasing them now. They were both in the same life cycle, eight to 10 years. We were going to get eight to 10 years out of both of them. Even the other ones that we were leasing, we were probably going to go 10 years and go, what are we doing now? There's not much value in them after that, to trade them in. We are trading in our current four monitors that we have with that. I know you had asked me the question, so warranty is one-year complete coverage. We'll assess it after that one year. If we decided to go for, we have to go for an annual maintenance program, which is what we currently do already, which is about $2,500 a year. We're already doing that now. If we wanted to continue with full coverage, we would assess it after the first year, and they tell me the cost would be somewhere around $2,200 per month. I'm sorry, per monitor, per year. So that's a cost of $11,000 a year to have full coverage on the monitors, complete. No matter what happens to them, if we spent, after the one year, after the full coverage is up, we would spend $11,000. So that's an added cost of $100,000. So if you add the $100,000 to the $250,000, we're still below, $70,000 below what we were from the original quote. They are insured. That's why I said we will reassess it in one year. We do currently have, when me and Dustin went over this, we have allotted $50,000 for each monitor currently, which was in line of what these cost. So if some major damage does happen to the monitors, obviously, we would have to make a claim, and the insurance would cover it. I don't see where... Again, we'll revisit it to see that warranty and see if we truly need...
Yeah, improve them all up to $250,000, or you want to add the insurance onto it?
No. I mean, I can come back to you, because it's going to be a year. I can come back to you in here and say, hey, look, we revisited. We think we're going to need this coverage. I don't think we're going to need that coverage. Because, again, we do maintain them. We do have to have them certified every year, so we're already spending the $2,500 a year for them to come out and check out the monitors.
Do you remember if the last motion said renting them?
Leasing.
Leasing, I mean. Did it actually say that in the motion?
I do not remember that.
I don't.
I don't think it did. I think that was the plan that we went with. We went with 10 payments of roughly $41,000. But they were leased, and these are purchased, so these are ours.
No action?
Okay. Okay. The other thing in monitors, so I'm proposing right now monitors and tablets. I'm asking for an approval of not to exceed $10,000, which will include four monitors, one at each station, the chief's office, and eight tablets for the frontline apparatus, vehicles, and fire inspector. That will help us streamline our paperwork, dispatching, responding, and the location of the apparatus. So basically, right now, we're starting the infrastructure of moving forward and being able to go digital and electronic from here on out. So we need to spend some money.
That number was $10,000?
$10,000 right now is what we think, what I think we would need.
Yeah, funds, those funds are available. You've checked in?
The funds are available. I did talk to Rondo.
Saved him in the one above.
And we saved from the one above, yes.
You have a motion?
There will be more coming. I'm being transparent, because we are upgrading the infrastructure. Like you know, the internet's going in. We're trying to get our own server over here. We're going to link all three of the stations. This is the start of that process to incorporate everything. This is going to be huge for the crews. It's definitely going to streamline dispatch.
I'll make a motion to approve not more than $10,000 or four monitors for the fire department.
Support.
Court by DiGiorgio. Anybody have any questions for the fire chief? H.I.P. chief thinks, Emery? Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Okay. 7H, we deleted. 7I is payroll two-step approval process, policy, and overtime. So I added overtime to it. We have technically one employee that's got over, about 200 hours in overtime. Per the union contract, basically, if you look at page 11, section 14.4, pretty much what it says, any overtime that's not within reason should be approved by the board. 200 hours of overtime since the beginning or the first of the year is kind of excessive. That employee's on the way to making an additional $27,000 this year at the rate that they're going. So my point being is that we have in the union contract, any excessive overtime needs to be approved by the board, within reason.
Mike, you're talking about one of my employees, and those are, most of them mandated hours by the state because we have to work elections, and all her overtime is covered by the state. We don't even pay for it.
I don't think any of the other townships or any other communities in anywhere's within 100 square miles has a 200-hour overtime for one employee because of the elections.
We now have early voting, Mike. We have to... We have, now have early voting, Mike, we have to.
I'm saying it doesn't, still doesn't add up to 200 hours.
It does. What, is she making it up? Am I making it up?
So I'm gonna look at a pay stub that we have here, which doesn't, again, make a lot of sense, but shows that the employee has...
I'm sure a lot of the overtime is justifiable, but there, but it just seems a little bit...
Well, this pay stub right here alone...
Too excessive.
It shows...
It's required.
Not this one. Okay, again, I'm gonna say, let me speak, please. This payroll, pay stub right here shows the hours worked, it comes out to 36.9 hours. And then it says times two, so 36 times two is 72 hours. Then it says times one and a half. I'm sorry, so it's 33 hours times two is 66 hours, and then it's times one and a half. She's getting time and a half for this whole, for two pay periods. Not straight time, there's not even straight time figured, it's not straight time taken off. This employee's getting time and a half for everything.
No.
Her paycheck was $2,756.16 for one pay period.
They have to work five additional hours to get time and a half.
It's right here, Susan. This has got your signature on the bottom of it.
Yes, and that's Rhonda's...
Approving it.
Puting it, yes.
So...
So...
We, I understand how the process works.
Five extra hours to get time and a half. Well, you don't, 'cause I have to keep explaining this.
No, you don't, because they have to work 35 hours, work an additional five hours before they even get one hour of overtime. I understand how all that works.
And what you're talking about, this is a reaction to, she didn't even put this time in. You had an employee who went to training, which is what this is. She put in the time, so then it was only fair to give the other employee the time.
Yeah, but that was last year.
Other employee was five hours for...
Right, she didn't get it.
But, okay, so if it was, if she went to training last year, the contract says that within a two-week period, she should've turned in her training, okay? But, put that aside, if we, the board should've made a decision on whether to pay her for that training she went to last year, and it shouldn't have gone on the same paycheck. It should've gone as a separate paycheck.
That was a correction, and...
As an error.
Everything is, we put in all this information in the budget, you approved it in the budget. You approved...
We approved an additional $27,000 for an employee.
Excuse me, Mike, but I didn't interrupt you. You included also, you voted on our contract with Washington and Ray. We are obligated to be down there for early voting. That's after hours. She worked on one of the holidays, even, federal holidays. Nobody else is...
That was a class.
We weren't, no, it was not.
Juneteenth?
That was, there was another one, I don't remember what it was this time. But that, and that is all covered by the state.
We haven't seen a dime from the state. I know you applied for it, but then it would be a different story, but...
It'll be here by October. They have the whole state...
This pay stub, I don't understand how you don't, how do you justify this pay stub?
I told you, because you gave your person, you changed the, we didn't...
I'm not, I'm going by what you have written and what you signed on.
Yes, and you didn't include the one from your employee.
Time and a half for her whole pay period without any straight time. And then the last time, she just, basically, again...
Okay, so what's the point here? What are you, what are you asking?
This has gotta stop.
Yeah.
We got a, we got a meltdown going on with the other employees here, that this employee is getting so much more money and so much more favoritism, and it's caused to create a terrible, toxic atmosphere.
So let's, let's go back to the beginning. In March, toward the end of March, in our annual budget meeting, we discovered that one of the employees, their annual salary looked a little extensively high. So after further investigation by myself and Mike, we found that this employee is being improperly paid. She was bumped up a couple steps, according to the union contract, which she is not entitled to.
Well, I would like to stop you right there, Frank, 'cause you cannot talk about this without the employee being here.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the pay practices that you implemented. I'm not talking, this is not, the employees, it's not the employee's fault, okay?
All of this is...
So all I'm doing is, in an effort to enhance transparency, I'm requesting with the next payroll, that all employees' payroll, along with the backup documentation, vacation hours, personal time, medical leave, training, et cetera, will go through the two-step approval process, similar to the monthly checks, before they get submitted. And that would be you approving it first, and then myself.
No, I'm, you are too emotionally involved in this right now.
No, I'm not emotionally involved, Susan. But that, the union contract that we have with these employees is a legal binding document. And when you took somebody and bumped them up two steps that caused them to eventually get to $5.50 an hour, that's wrong.
And I realized my mistake, and we corrected it. Why this keeps dragging on?
Okay, so we corrected it, not completely, though. The vacation hours are still at 180 hours. And the contract calls for no more than 170 hours of vacation employee yet.
So how are the rules different? Mike extends vacation hours to his employee.
What are you talking about? Don't blame my employee, because you're only talking about $165.
They are all our employees. They're not yours, mine, theirs. They're all our employees.
We have our staffs, and we are, we are the direct supervisors of specific staffs and departments, Frank, and they are separate for a reason. Checks and balances, they are separate for a reason.
You're right, that's why...
So what is this for?
And the two of you ganging up all the time.
We're not ganging up.
You're meeting all the time, you're...
Susan, you're talking about an employee that's making $30,000 above the salary than what they're supposed to be making.
That's not, that's...
200 hours of overtime, and you're paying them all overtime, no straight time for two weeks straight.
That is not true, Mike, you forgot the number wrong.
You expect us not to do anything about, this is taxpayers' dollars. This is our taxpayers' dollars. And you're giving this money away like it's, like water. We got employees that are ready to have a meltdown, they're ready to have a lynch mob session out back, and you want us to forget about? We forgot about, this has been brought up for about seven months now.
I know, you've been dragging on. You keep changing your mind, you keep escalating.
Well, again, like Frank said, that the vacation is still at 180 hours. If you add up her total vacation time for two months, it would only be 70 hours. Where's the other 110 hours of vacation time come from? It's still on there.
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's another 2,200, it's right in black and white. Right on, right on the sheet, you got it in your packet. And she, rolling over vacation time.
It also says in the contract that their prior authorization for employees from the immediate supervisor. So...
Up to a certain extent, you can't authorize 200 hours overtime.
How many times do I have to say this? The state requires us to be here on a Saturday.
There's not one municipality that's had to pay their employees so far for the beginning of the year, for two elections, 200 hours overtime.
I beg to differ.
And plus their straight time? 200 hours overtime, how many 40-hour weeks is that? Is that like, that's five 40-hour work weeks of regular time.
Mike, you're just throwing numbers around now.
It is, it's five 40 hours is 200 hours, that's 200, that's five addition...
Where are we going with this?
So right here, it says that this employee's got 180 hours of available, of vacation time. This, since that employee has started, they should only have 70 hours of vacation time total. So I don't know where they got 180 hours.
This is the information that Frank threw on the table when we didn't manage to look at it until...
The union figured it out. At year one, zero to one, you get zero vacation time.
So now the union is directing travel.
I'm, you're interrupting me.
Oh, the union has filed complaints and grievances, which is their legal right to do. And you've stalled, and you've dragged your feet as far as addressing the issues.
We've addressed the issue a long ago.
Zero to one year...
Her vacation hours are still at 180 hours.
Zero to one year, you get zero vacation time. From one year to two years is...
Yes, it is personal to me, because I am the treasurer, and I'm responsible for taxpaying dollars. Yes, it is.
Let me finish what I'm...
We also brought up the auditors. The auditors thought that everything was in order. I mean, I went so far as to do...
Well, it's obviously not, because zero to one year is zero vacations. You go one year to two years, you get 35 hours, and you go from two years to three years is another 35 hours, is where that employee's at. That's a total of 70 hours. That employee's used 60 hours. That means that she's got basically 10 hours left. How does she have 120.5 hours left?
And all these overtime hours were approved...
This is vacation I'm talking about, not overtime. That was a whole different story.
She hasn't even used all her vacation.
Technically, if employee... Why are you not thinking, this is the problem? Because you're not correcting it. That's why we're still talking about it after this long period of time.
There's a grievance, and when there's a grievance, you have to wait until the final, the, it's finished.
This got to this point because you didn't do anything about it in the first place. We can't let this go on any longer. This has gotta stop, and what you're doing is, I mean, is wrong. I mean, you tell these people what you're doing, would they not like to go all week long and get a time and a half on their paycheck instead of straight time? I'm sure every one of them would. But it's not fair to be using taxpayers' dollars to do what's going on here. This is...
I'm gonna need more clarification on what's going on.
Ask, any question you want, we can answer. We got all document, this is documentation, you look at it, nobody even has to explain anything.
Okay, wait, I'm looking at it. I'm looking at a Sunday through Friday. I'm looking at total hours. Susan, are those total overtime hours? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and so to be fair, it's showing that those are 33 hours. I'm looking at the time.
This, okay.
Okay. So, and to Mike's point, I'm seeing that it's 33 hours times two. Why is it times two? Is it 33 hours for two weeks?
Two sessions. No, there were two, two classes, two, two different, with the same hours and days. Although this one was, I think, one of them was Juneteenth, so there was an extra holiday.
Okay.
No, that was a different one.
Okay, hold on, hold on. To clarify it in my mind, this person is working 33, or training, this is, it says training on here. 33 hours for the week. At what point are we paying double time for that? Why?
So once she gets to 40 hours. The first five hours, regular time. After that comes overtime.
At time and a half.
Yes.
So again, it doesn't explain, to Mike's point, why is it two times?
Because there were two different sessions. And maybe it shouldn't have been paid in the same, he's saying it shouldn't have been paid in the same paycheck.
Okay, but, okay, so what I'm looking at here is, for example, this is March 17th, a total of six hours. Are you telling me that person was actually 12 hours in training?
The year before.
So you're picking up...
So she didn't know she should put these in, this time in. She didn't know she got paid. She was until one of the other employees...
Okay, so in other words, this is, we are retroling?
Yes, thank you.
A year ago, that she...
Are we allowed to retro?
I haven't seen it, I have not seen that, either that employee went to a class and was not paid. That employee got paid for that class last year, that time.
So that employee got paid, but had straight time when they went?
Right, now, now they're getting paid again for the same class, at time and a half.
On page two, explain.
You could not be patient, not be patient.
I'm not seeing it.
So your employee went to a class and got...
My employee had three hours overtime, we're talking about 200 hours overtime. You keep comparing my employee, that went on a Friday when the offices closed, and she got, I don't know, three hours overtime. I got the paper, I can go get it. That's all, we're talking about, three hours for the whole year, not 200 hours for the whole year. Three hours, and received a master's plan and assistance.
Mike, what do you wanna do here? We're just gonna keep going circles?
Well, obviously, you haven't seen what she sees factually. For some reason, you got your name signed on all this stuff. Until we can come to the conclusion, I guess, we're gonna keep talking about it.
Well, I think in order to resolve this, this is not, I'm sorry, Susan, this isn't really clear on why we're doing the two...
Well, especially with Rhonda.
I mean, we're talking about it, but I don't see it on, I don't see paperwork.
If I had known this was gonna be, we're gonna discuss it, I would've been prepared. So Frank snuck this in again.
We've been talking about it for eight months, Susan. This is not the first time this has been brought up.
Mike, you issued a letter, you did not follow through on the letter, and now we got remediation. You need to be consistent.
Is there any more overtime than besides that?
Well, and he's probably talking about her election.
Well, again, no, there was, well, 200 hours total of overtime for this year so far.
Well, I don't see, you didn't provide the unpaid...
Just recently went to a training again, again, a training class, which I don't know any training that really takes overtime. There was Juneteenth this year, which was, you know, would be eight hours overtime for a holiday, but it was 16 hours overtime. And overtime, any trainings I've been to, they don't usually ever exceed a 40-hour work week, you know, and stay within, you know, normal for employees.
That's correct, I would agree with you.
So, but where did the other eight hours overtime come from?
Well, unless they did the training on a weekend.
It wasn't, they don't do training on weekends.
Well, this says Sunday, so there must've been training.
Sunday, the last day is Friday, which is a holiday.
These are municipal training programs, they don't have trainings. It's not, commenting, it's usually a 40-hour work week, but they don't have... Chief, does the fire guys have? Do they have any excess over 40 hours training? Most of the classes are under 40 hours.
They vary, but it's during the week.
During the week and under 40 hours, they don't have to work overtime.
There are some that are over the weekend, but typically it's during the week.
So in other words, what, this training was during the week, during regular business hours? Because I don't think that should be time and a half. I don't, and I'm kinda concerned about the retro, based on what's in the union contract, but I'll discuss about union contracts, because we seem to be pointing out this union contract, and I got lots of issues with this union contract.
Well, we're working with the one we got right now, we're gonna rewrite the contract. We gotta go on what it says.
Well, it is, it is not especially fair to keep honing in on this one person when there's so many issues. People come in at all hours.
I don't think it's so much to honing in on one person, it's I think what you're doing right now, and what you're allowing to happen. I don't know how many other employees this may be affected, may be affected by this.
For the record, I did not sneak this in, I put it in at 11:30 Wednesday morning.
This patent was on her desk when it came in today. Mike asked her to take some of the stuff off that she put in, and then you just left it on the table for us, so they didn't see it.
My issue is that employee's getting paid time and a half for every hour that they're working, and that shows right here with your signature on it.
Not till they get to 40 hours.
Susan, it says right here, and it has a total, which, that, we can get the check for that week, but it, her check that week was...
Why don't you print out the justice so we can, I can actually be prepared?
$2,756 was her check that, that, for that pay period. That's amazing.
I would need to see more paperwork than justice.
It's all right here.
It says not enough, Mike, it doesn't tell me anything. It's just a time sheet. And, and we don't even have all the details about what it was. We're adding in something from last year. The contract says no retro, and speaking of contracts, you know, we're trying to follow this, we're picking on one employee about their overtime, and we want to, you know, have people to, you know, two parties to approve it. But, hold on a second, Mike, I would like to have my turn to talk for a minute. And as I'm looking through this contract, I was here this morning, at 7:38 this morning, assessing's closed, treasury's closed. You people want, you're asking, you're telling me, you're gonna work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 7:30 to 4:30, 27 hours, Thursday from 8:30 to 4:38, hours, which gives the girls a 35-hour work week. However, they're taking breaks? That's supposed to be, they forewent lunches and breaks, so they wouldn't have to work Friday. Let me finish. Wouldn't have to work Fridays. Now you're citing all this stuff in the contract, but who's citing this, that the standard That the standard work week is thirty-five hours. You're supposed to be working Monday through Friday. You're supposed to be getting a one-hour unpaid lunch. You're telling me that there's a lot of stress in this office, but nobody is taking a break. Nobody is getting away from each other. Why are we working four days, cramming in thirty-five hours? You've got these people in here, no breaks. It is a proven fact, you need a break. That is a proven fact.
It's a law that you need a break. And they do take a break. They do, they take two fifteen-minute breaks.
Okay.
That's a contract issue, but we're not even-
I know, but, but Mike-
You're getting off the point.
No, I'm not. I'm saying that you're over here pointing out things that are going on in this contract, but you're picking and choosing what you want to enforce in this contract.
You're buying what that employee making that kind of money, that much overtime?
I don't have all the facts, Mike, I don't have, I got nothing here to look at.
All right.
Okay, I work in accounting, I've worked there for thirty years in accounting.
Contract.
I haven't seen this.
We will be looking at the contract.
And let's, let's, let's throw it all on the table.
I mean, this is, this is ridiculous.
That was negotiated before, was a conflict of interest, because you had Susan Brockman, the clerk, that was negotiating that contract for the union, working here as a clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that right?
I agree with you.
And then on top of it, the members didn't even ratify that contract. It was just, give it to them, here, this is our contract.
That's not true.
And again.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
Why is, why is it that-
You ask every employee in here, and they'll tell you that.
I think their memory is-
Well, then, let's, let's see the records. You have records of that?
I'm not going to argue the contracts for another, another day.
And not only that, Richard Corey negotiated that last contract, not Susan Brockman.
Oh, okay.
But, but my point being, Mike, we're, we're, we're complaining about somebody's overtime, which I don't have all the facts on, and your departments are not open at seven-thirty like they're supposed to be.
The treasurer's office starts collecting taxes eight o'clock, eight to four-thirty, look on the back of your tax book.
I, I get it, but you, why don't you have someone here? That person's getting paid for thirty-five hours.
I'm in here by eight o'clock.
Fine, but that's eight o'clock to four-thirty.
And my treasurer come, and my deputy treasurer comes in at nine, because he works till six.
So, you're talking about a whole different subject.
I know, but, no, I'm not, I'm talking about contract. The contract policy says, your, your hours are supposed to be a regular workday. It's seven hours a day you get paid for, one hour is unpaid for your lunch. You, this, this township has changed these rules. Nobody's following them. Like you said, your deputies coming in at nine, assessing was closed, they'll come in when they want. How are we being uniform and managing?
Explain that.
You can, because then we're picking on somebody over overtime when we don't even have all the facts. This is all I have to work with.
When people walk in, people walk in at four o'clock, four fifteen, four-thirty to pay their taxes. We have to balance out at the end of the day, we take a, we run a report on all the money that's collected, both water, general, utility, building, and taxes. We have to balance it all out, make sure we're depositing the amount of money that we collected. So, that takes time at the end of the day. So, that's why I allow deputy treasurer to come in at nine, and he works till six.
With Obrak, he didn't have to do that.
It does say in it.
With Obrak, he didn't have to do that.
Yeah, he did. He came in, he came in at ten o'clock when Obrak here was, because he was, he was part-time, and he worked till five, six o'clock, every nerve.
What's assessing's due?
In that contract, it also-
And our township has grown immensely since Obrak left in four years, okay?
Right, and a lot of it is just-
There's, there's, I did my study when I, when I asked to put on, the deputy treasurer on full-time. Other municipalities have less people than us, and have three people working.
A lot of stuff is automated now, too.
Okay, I'm in here before you every morning, I'm here an hour and a half, two hours more, every day.
We're not here to point fingers and argue with each other.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to make a point that she's trying to send you to.
All right, we're getting carried away there.
My whole thing is that we have a contract here, we're not following it, and we're picking and choosing points out of this contract.
So, there is wording in the contract that part of it-
There is wording in the contract that says, based on-
I get it, there's also wording that says when they're supposed to hear.
You can reschedule people's hours.
Well, I didn't see that.
Well, you don't have the whole contract.
Apparently not, I only have what you guys provided. That's what I said, I only have all the information that is necessary.
Okay, well then, we'll get your whole contract. Anyway, this two-step process is what I propose in order to enhance transparency and take corrective action against improper pay practices that went on. No one approved it for clerk to give an employee a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent raise, and then it went to a four-dollar-and-fifty-cent raise. So, we need a two-step approval process. Also, on June twelfth, I made a motion that the paychecks, the pay stubs be transparent. That shows what the hourly, what the person makes on an hourly basis, how much vacation time they have, how much personal time they have, and how much they've used. To date, we have not had that, she has not done that yet.
She didn't make that.
No, she didn't, all she did was put down-
Frank, you didn't go to her, you didn't say, what, what, how long does this process take? What do I have to, can I possibly do this? We just went ahead and made that motion without a doctor.
I've talked to D and M payroll, and they said it's a very simple process. All she has to do is implement the process. It's been two months now.
I was under the impression that they need changes, because she said it was not a very difficult transition, and all you got to do is go to her. So, I don't think that, I think it's maybe just-
Just Rhonda, your, Rhonda works under you then?
Yeah.
Okay, then I, I think it's a fair request to ask her if and when this will die.
Well, I did, but it was all taken care of, so.
Okay. That's a fair request.
Frank, can you ask a question about your proposal for the two-step process? Mike, correct me if this wouldn't apply for all.
Yes, all, all payroll, every employee, all payroll, all employees. I am, I'm just, you know, again, it's taxpayers' money that's all in the waste.
I know, I know.
And I had a hard time with that.
I was not in a problem with this, but I don't want to, I don't want to be angry, Frank, because I think you're too emotional with this. And I may be treated as someone who is middle-of-the-road, who's taken-
I'm not middle-of-the-road, okay. I'm emotional to it because it's not fair, it's what I've been saying all along. People, employees here get treated differently. Everybody, yes, they do, yes, they do. And it's not fair. No, the contract gives me the right to, to allow the deputy to come in at a different time than everybody else, and you can look at it.
Can we consider going on the request for forms, which was a two-step process?
Yes. I made the motion. Someone else has a different one, they're about to-
I didn't hear a motion, right?
I didn't either.
Frank made a motion.
I did.
Could you repeat it, I didn't hear it.
I made a motion that in an effort to enhance transparency and request, in effect, that with the next payroll, that all employees payroll along with the backup documentation, vacation hours, personal time, medical leave, training, et cetera, will go through a two-step approval process similar to the monthly checks before being submitted. First step would be you, the second would be me, just like we do the, the, the bills and all the other paychecks we send out.
No, because we're not addressing any specific employee. This is employees in general, everybody.
No, you're not, you are. You are. You're addressing one of them.
You're out of line, and if you don't stop, we're going to ask you to leave. This is a public, a, a business meeting that the board needs to conduct, it's not, public comment's already over. And we have not addressed one specific employee.
It also seems to be a pre-prepared, considered effort to make the clerk look bad by you two.
You're happy with that, Paul? You're happy with allowing an employee to receive that kind of compensation? Is that what you're going to offer us?
Most of this conversation should have been done offline.
We have a, we have a meeting going on.
You can't, because it's open meetings, Zach. Oh, two of you can meet at a time. Two of you can meet at a time.
We've tried that.
Yeah, you have.
What's it?
Yes, we have tried.
Yeah, that's enough, let's go, we got a motion.
I just made it.
You made a motion. Can you make it clear that that applies to everybody?
Yes, that applies to every employee in the township, Paul.
At your second? Supporting the two-step process?
I will support it, based on the fact that this two-step verification is fairly common in many organizations, and it's for that, nothing devious. It's to prevent simple mistakes from happening. So, yes, I would support it.
Any other discussion? Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, excuse me, there's more discussion. First of all, this organization is different than any other. Emergencies come up. If I'm down at early voting, nobody's around, you guys called around to see where we were, because you didn't pay attention to the contracts that we signed. And so, you called the other officials to ask if you were there. So, I, I know you keep track of what we're doing. Sometimes it's an emergency, and I, I will have to approve this. And I am statutorily required to have overtime hours.
That's understandable, but the whole paycheck-
And we go through the process of the budget, we approve the overtime at budget level. And also, I want to point out again that Frank is too close to this, too emotional, and has, and has really spent too much time on this. So, I think there should be someone other than Frank if we're going to do this, and I know, Mike, that is a different story.
Correct, I don't think this was requesting approval for overtime. This is, as I understand it, your initial request was-
My request is a two-step approval process.
Right.
And would include overtime on it?
Right, but he's not asking in this request to, that he approves overtime before it happens.
No, that's, that's-
That's not what he's asking for.
No, no, I'm saying that before payrolls, before payroll gets submitted, all, everything that's, those are two-step approval processes.
So, okay, Sean's following you.
Yeah, so if overtime was approved by the board, excess overtime, there's no issue.
Okay, so what if there was a couple of-
It's already been approved, and has, as has our contract with early voting, and the hours that we have to spend on that.
The whole paycheck is time and a half. The whole paycheck. You're laughing, but the whole paycheck is time and a half.
You're not laughing.
I'm going to laugh. Times two.
I mean, it appears that way, to be fair, that's what it appears.
Well, these are Rhonda's scribbles to herself, so I can't even interpret that.
But that's what was presented to the board, and that's how it appears. I don't have enough information to really make an intelligent judgment on it. There's just not enough information here. There's scribbles all over, and there's different things written.
I think this whole conversation should be tabled and so on.
I agree.
What about the extra vacation?
I, I don't, I don't see, you're talking, you're talking to two-hundred hours, you're privy to that, because I don't have that on here. So, you keep throwing out numbers.
You got this whole packet.
I don't see that on here, Mike. Tell me what I'm missing. I took this right off of there. Everything looked like it was printed out from the, and that was a motion, so I don't have it in here.
I'd like to bring it all back, maximum.
Oh, is it this, oh, never mind, it's gotta be this page right here.
Zero, one, here.
I don't know, it says May.
Yes, that's it.
So, what does that have to do with this?
Uh, don't, that's a different, these are vacation, it's a spreadsheet, yeah. Rhonda keeps on vacation hours.
I stand corrected, I, I have, I have.
That's another thing, people are not consistent with their timesheets, which are your time in. So, there should be consistency across the board, and instead, you're honing in on the one.
Does this work on a calendar, or is this on a fiscal? Is this based on when the person is hired, that this is all calculated, or is this on a calendar?
One thing, you're not supposed to scroll, you know, here to the next, and you can history and all those for this.
You just, I just showed you this email that you gave permission for them to scroll over. That copies it right here, so.
Well, I would like to see the two-hundred overtime hours you're talking about, because that's not in this document.
There's a hundred and ten hours of overtime, I mean, a vacation, actually, vacation.
Yeah, but you, but you were saying about overtime, two-hundred hours of overtime, those were the words.
Your employee is right here, ready to explain it.
No.
No, no, let's not do that.
No, if you look at the pay stub, there's no pay stub in there. The pay stub doesn't have it on there?
No.
No, that's, that's just an example of what pay stubs are, were very vague as far as not having-
I would need to see what exactly your, if that's okay.
The union's got everything, I, I mean, every day of my work week is spent by the union, just suffer me, suffocate me.
Mike, the union shouldn't be spending their day on this.
Susan, you should have taken care of this eight months ago, why would it ever be like this and getting out of control? You need to hold up to what you've done and be responsible for what you've done and correct it, not try to pass it on everybody else. It hasn't been corrected, we just got a recent vacation thing that ends it. Could have taken care of, please, save this township a lot of-
I can't, Mike, because you've got, you're working with the union, and I can't, they have gotten involved now.
So, the union, obviously, for eight months, have got issues that's been going on, and when are you going to correct the issues? They've been, they brought them to you, now that they're not being corrected, we got to go to mediation. Let us move on. Teresa, what I-
So, there is a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion, we can make it, yeah, it could be anybody, I don't care, but there needs to be a two-step approval process.
Just clear it up, I want the mess cleaned up. Motion, any other discussion?
Well, no, they're, they're not happy with the fact I'm the group person.
Susan, do you want me to work with you? I mean, I do accounting work, I've done it for thirty years.
Yes, I do.
I didn't do that. I think this whole thing should wait till next month, all of this, because we need time to-
I don't want to wait another month. Hey, we can't wait another month.
This doesn't have anything to do with the issue that you're considering.
There was another, another sixteen hours overtime at the last training. Last training got sixteen more hours overtime. And on eight of it was, was a federal holiday, but what was the other?
Mike, I don't have that stuff in front of me, you can't just throw this around. We need more information to discuss any of this.
You approved it. How do I know about it if you approved it?
You should keep referring to different things, and you're just throwing out random numbers.
I'm getting what I'm getting suffocated with by the union, right, the other employee.
I'll make it. So, my motion stands with what I said, except it'll go to Susan for, for approval, and then Teresa for approval.
I don't think that these people have any idea what's going on, if they did, they would be, they would be very-
I think they've gotten a full line now.
Are you guys in the office, in an office at the same time? Could we recommend just booking out a meeting, bring all your documentation, and hash it out, this should be taken offline.
This isn't meeting, this is our meeting. This is the only opportunity we have, an opportunity to meet. We all can't get together and meet because this is open meetings, that can be-
Well, two of you can meet at a time.
Two of us.
That's right.
They do all the time, so.
Yeah, Frank and Mike do all the time, but they don't meet with Susan. Yeah, Susan's been met with many times, but she hasn't done anything.
All right, we got a motion. I can't believe everybody's fine with what's going on.
You know, I'm going to say, just so that you know, I'm not fine, but I don't have enough information here, Mike. There's just not enough information to make a good judgment call. At this point, I, I'd have to just let it go for now till we can actually sit down, we have paperwork, and we can look at it. And whatever we need to fix, we fix.
So, it's still the motion of the two-step process, so that this gets looked at by a second party?
I know.
Do you need to re-rea the motion, Henry? We're all thinking, discussing, I don't necessarily want to.
I get it. No. Yes.
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 Move on to item seven J, which is the FOIA fee schedule. So, I got chewed out last meeting, so I can't, can't look at the last one.
All I, all I may ask is that we change the FOIA fee, so that it's right now. You're allowed to charge people the minimum amount to the lowest hourly rate. We don't have part-time employees anymore, so now our minimum rate is twenty-two dollars and eleven cents. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the FOIA fee schedule amount to currently our rate of twenty-two eleven, effective eight, twenty-two, twenty-four.
I'll second. Anybody for discussion? Can we get a roll call?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
George, you?
Yes.
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 Move on to item, our motion carries, move on to item seven K, staff training.
Uh, yeah, an email was sent out back in May about anybody wanting to take training, such as Word or Excel. And I guess the two employees did respond immediately, saying they wanted to take it, the training, they'd be interested in taking it, and then they never heard anything else. It was brought up in a staff meeting, and, and again, nothing's happened, so, is there a reason why it hasn't happened, or we're just going to throw it out there?
Okay, let's focus, Susan, again, yes, and we discussed it at the staff meeting, we were there, and we said that initially, we thought it was going to be two-hundred dollars for each for everyone. We explained that, no, we were wrong, that it could get, it was going to cost two-hundred dollars for each person. And so, yeah, it's not a good tactic. And we explained that to everyone at the staff meeting.
Right, but it took, but they waited a couple of months before it was even brought back to- Communication is very important around here, and you don't communicate, just like these numbers on the doors. People came to me and asked me, what are these numbers on the door for? I said, no, that's a good question, I don't know.
We did talk about those numbers.
Yes, we did, but I, I had a reply back on it, and then I had to tell everybody, I sent everybody an email, let them know what those numbers are for. But-
There's no action under seven K, be good for them.
What's that?
Why is there no action?
Yeah, so, staff training, what are you going to do? We're going, you're going to implement it, or what?
It's not my job to train people, Frank.
I know it's not your job, but you threw it out there, so is it a good idea to train our, our workforce and make them more educated, or more better at their job?
Do you feel your staff, you took them, how was it?
It was Excel and Word and other-
It was Excel only, it was Excel.
Oh, Excel, okay. Well, then, I guess we'll take a survey and find out for your best possible.
Did your employees-
Or you took a survey, what'd they say?
People were very interested in it.
Okay, so they were interested in it, but we haven't done anything to-
Because it was different, it was more than we thought, it was two-hundred, we thought it was two-hundred for everybody, then-
So, do you want to make a motion now?
We got busy, and it's not training, Frank, you're welcome to do any training with your staff, you're just, you know, under certain limitations.
But, see, you threw it out there, and then, and then, and then no one ever heard anything back.
We talked about it exactly.
So, if people are interested, yes, I know.
What more can I do? We talked about it in a staff meeting, Frank, you're just, you're just-
So, if people have, if people have responded that they would like to take it, what are your thoughts? Should we do this, or not?
I had an election, and I have an option coming up, I can't do it. You want to take it on, and I'm sure people will appreciate it.
We'll table it, no action, no, we'll table it. We'll table it. No action. No, I'll table it. Guess I'll do that.
We're tabling it, or are we?
No, I'll, I'll, uh, yeah, we'll table it till next.
Just take it off.
Okay.
Move on to item seven L, which is our township tax rate.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate L-4209 for 2024 as presented.
Mike, L. Roderick, just for-
Second, he's the one who prepared it.
Support by, um, Smith. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Move on to item seven M. Valid link.
So, for who don't know, we had an election, and 50 ballot, we had four people. And one person was, um, not qualified, but remained on the ballot, and there really wasn't any communication about not being, um, qualified. So, that person ended up winning. Then, so the county puts forward the two that have the most votes. They did that, but the one that had the most votes is disqualified. So, now, the plan is to just put one person forward, who was Mr. Benson, and then we have a independent that wasn't on the ballot in, um, August, but will be on the November ballot. It's unfortunate that all these votes are disenfranchised, basically, because we, we only have one person. We had four people on the ballot. So, there has been some, some, uh, some issue with the county. And our attorney, we could add, we could, we end, basically, we'd end up suing the county to add another person to the ballot. The third person, the third, the highest, third highest number of votes. The county clerk said he wouldn't oppose if we did it, but it is gonna take a legal process and a court's order. So, I don't know if you want to hire the attorney to do this, to, to take action on this. We don't, you guys have a discussion.
I think, yeah, like you said, we had two, three people.
We, we still have two qualified candidates in the law.
Yes.
There weren't, one of them was not a general.
But that, because that's an independent. But if we have to, um, be valid, we're still, we would never have to do a special election, because obviously, those are the two that would, yeah. So, the question then would be, do you wanna spend taxpayers' money to put a third person on, when we already have two qualified candidates? Right? Is that what you're saying, that's the question?
The third person did receive this, the third highest amount of votes, which were qualified, and as the, should, I think it's only fair to that person that they would be, so had that opportunity to be on the ballot. That's my opinion. I think it's very unfair that, because we had one candidate-
I know the numbers are skewed, because that happened, but we do have two qualified. The question is, do we wanna spend taxpayer money to put a third person, when we already have two qualified candidates from the election?
I don't even know if it's still possible, Frank. If we need to like, ballots could be up, so.
I don't think it's gonna be really expensive.
We'll have the attorney look into it.
But it can't, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be really expensive to draw up the documentation, so then let it to the county. Just be kind of fair, because she was on the ballot.
I know. I wouldn't put on it. I'd have to, I'd stand for it.
I'm just saying, if you were the next person that would be eliminated, because-
Well, I, you know, and I'm, I'm saying, and, you know, I support you. But we did have two. Unfortunately, one was not eligible, and we have two on the ballot, so.
It's not their fault.
Well, I know.
She put a lot of time and invested a lot of money, not heard, you know, and, and, I think, like fairness, and then let the people decide.
Teresa, you would, I mean, we have to vote unless we voted to, we have to agree to let you not vote.
I'm gonna make a motion, go, and you have the attorney drop the papers, and you have the, have the McComb County Elections Bureau go ahead and take a, a possible look into this, to see if we can have, um, Tremblay's name removed, and Dorothy's-
It's already removed.
And then have Dorothy's name added. So, that will give us three candidates for the general. Kind of fairness, that's unfair. That's my motion.
I'll support.
All right, Susan. Does anybody have any other discussion? Appreciate if you're concerned or if you- There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Roger?
Yes.
Boys? Yes. Dover?
Yes.
Smith?
No promises there. No motion carries. The county could deny. Does you do, Dorothy?
No, I understand. I feel bad, because I feel the county should've maybe made it right in the beginning. And then fair to all the candidates, or maybe make a suggestion and put everybody back on the ballot. I don't, except for Mike, who withdrew, so.
Great suggestion.
I don't know what they can do.
See what happens.
I'm just surprised they were taking his name off now, but couldn't take his name off in August.
I see Ryan just showed up for our item seven M, which is our closed session. Before we go into closed session, can we take a minute? What do I?
I'd just like to say congratulations to Eileen Rhodes, who's retiring after 43 years, because I had a full conversation when we were told to have her return in closed sessions.
You wanna do communications right now? How about we do that, then? I had it on there, too. Chief probably had it in communication.
I do.
You gonna steal his line?
Stealing my thunder, Susan.
Sorry, I knew you'd say it, but I wanted to say it while the camera was going.
All right, we'll do communications right now. Chief, you wanna start us out, then?
Sure. Um, you have him in front of you, so, uh, communications with our department. So, we did, uh, our funds, we have completed tearing out the carpet, installing the flooring on station one and two. Uh, we did raking down the Eparas made floors at stations one and three, we're in the process of sealing those floors. And we're also still in the process of painting and fixing station Eparas made doors. So, we made some progress on that, so we can start up some floor. Congratulations. We got grant funding, was approved by the state of Michigan for $63,000 for 18 sets of brand-new fire credit here. Each set includes hunkered coat, hunkered pants, and leather boots. We brought that up, um, a couple of meetings ago. It has no cost to the township, so we were awarded a full amount. Uh, we were allowed, obviously, we're gearing up for Peach Fest the following weekend. Throwing this out there for the people that may dislike me, I will be out on Main Street, um, in the Dunk Tank Saturday. You wanna take your shot at me, uh, for great charity, um, Neighbor United, which is a charity that supports local firefighters, which answers in a manner. So, I look forward to seeing everybody out there, so they fall in.
What time, exactly?
Probably around, you know, mid-afternoon, 5:00, 2:00. I haven't gotten the details that far, but I'll be there. I'll be around. Um, our open house, we nailed down the time, and the date will be October 12th, between 1:00 and 4:00 P.M. So, mark that on your calendars. And last but not least, um, I would like to acknowledge that Eileen Rhodes, for her dedication, commitment, and sacrifice for 43 years on the fire department, her service, she's been, she decided to retire. So, she will be, uh, missed, and we thank her for her service. It's a long time.
Then Jim Baldwin, who's in position to, um, for the N.O.T., are you a recruiting supervisor? Congratulations to him.
Emery, any more?
No.
Oh, Jim, yes, Jim got promoted at the North, Northeast Oakland Fire Academy. He is now the director of that academy.
Teresa?
No.
Yeah, we had, uh, blood drive this past Thursday was very successful. We had about, uh, 42 donors with blood that's desperately needed throughout the country. The next, uh, blood drive will be Thursday, December 5th, uh, here at the Township Hall. Still collecting tax dollars. Uh, you have until September 14th, 5:00 A.P.M. to make your payment. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate Eileen on her retirement, dedicating 43 years of service to being a first responder. Um, Roadwork 32, a mile road, still scheduled to start at 32 Mile and Albert Road, uh, 30 Mile Road, traffic, I suppose. It's got us sometime in September. Don't have an exact date. Um, F-53, obviously, the detour's been removed, the road is all back up. They still have punch lists and some small missing things that they need to do. So, there may be still some, you know, a little bit of congestion out there. Evelyn Road is gonna have to get back under construction. They never did, uh, approaches or the intersections, so that'll be back down to, uh, like, that one-way traffic. I only be a day or two, I can expect that. Parking lot behind the township is tentative to be started this Friday at 8:23. The big papal tree was removed. It was under the parking lot, which was causing a lot of evening caving over on one side. Just see, that's gone. I know around next door is pretty empty, about two. And Eileen Rhodes, again, congratulations, Eileen, on her retirement. All worth it. Other was at Town Hall on August 12th at 6:00 P.M. regarding the paving, uh, the possible paving of Melon and Cadian Street on an SAD. Um, we did have about 23 residents that showed up. A couple of people wrote in or called in. Um, pretty much, we had Bob Seaver, uh, Bob Seaver Township Attorney, Mitch Alrader Township Possessor, and also George Duquette here, myself, Frankie Georgia, and I think, um, Emery was here, too. Pretty much, in a nutshell, after it was being discussed, and the pricing was laid out to the residents, and how the SAD works, there was kind of a show of hands. Out of 23 people, only got a show of two hands that were in favor of doing the SAD. The other 21 basically wanted to leave it the way it was, and was primarily, they would prefer that it would be bumpy, that light cars are not driving in excessive speeds down there, which they're doing currently now. So, right now, we looked at it, I think it was in 2007 or 2008, and we'll probably get it again in the near future, so, we'll see. Currently, right now, they decided not to go to SAD. Peach Fest Labor Day weekend, we have schedules here at the township. If you wanna schedule, feel free to come get one. And that's just a safe and happy holiday upcoming on it. So, that was our communications. Uh, we could take-
I, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to enter closed session pursuant to-
I wanna see the break first.
We'll do any tweet, what we have to do, what we have to do.
Excuse me, can we, can the Cemetery Association give you the documentation you've been asking for?
Absolutely.
Can we do that now?
Yeah.
Well, I need to try and do it. Coming from all this, of course. No, I just can't get it. Then- Maybe we need to be more satisfied.
[coughs] An escalation, whereas, like, looks better than any of the others. No, I mean, all this, this chaos. They don't let that manager, just, just the supervisor. Yes. 60, 60%. I think it's a, it's a conservative.
All right, we're gonna go on a break, if you, if you guys just, I gotta watch for break.
Make a motion to enter closed session pursuant to section 8, 1 H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure. Second.
819? Support by D. Georgia, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session.